Other school committee members on Zoom. She is not yet. Maybe she's walking in, I don't know. Okay, I'd invite folks to join if you're able and join us, stand if you're able and join us in the.
To the flag of the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, creation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is our consent agenda. Not printed on there, we talked about this last time that we will be acknowledging when we review past executive session minutes in executive sessions, we make a public announcement. We're intending to put that on our agenda. It didn't make it on this agenda, it will be in the minutes. And I'm gonna verbally acknowledge that we reviewed and continued non-disclosure of school committee executive session minutes dated January 17th, 2023, January 30th, 2023, and the joint boards executive session minutes dated January 5th, 2023, under open meeting law.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Warrants were sent out.
Warrants were sent out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Lee, hi, Willie.
Is Mari on?
Oh, she's not on.
Okay, okay.
She's not on yet. So that's a six oh vote to approve. Thank you. And now we will have our public comment period. Obviously, if anyone in the room would like to make public comment, we invite folks to the microphone. As always, if you do come up, state your name and your address. Likewise, if you're joining us by Zoom, you're welcome to make public comment. I would just ask that you raise your hand in Zoom so I can see you, and then I would pull you in as a panelist, we'd be able to hear you. I'll give that a minute. See if anyone on Zoom is interested in public comment. I'm not seeing a hand go up there. I'm not seeing anyone in the room for public comment. So with that, let's move on to our informational updates, starting with superintendent and assistant superintendent updates.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate one of our sixth graders from Blanchard. She was selected as the winner of the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth 2022-2023 poster project winner. There were 324 entries and from across, it says 47 districts, and she won the middle school. So there's an elementary winner, there's a middle school winner, and then there was a, you know, high school level winner. And this is, it was Akshaya Rahendran, and her poster was Protect Our Environment and Safeguard Our Natural Resources. So congratulations to her, and I know they're doing something for her at the school as well, too. Tomorrow, we have a joint chairs discussion to talk about the FY24 budget based on the state aid information that recently has come out. So while it was interesting because the information that we had received from the superintendents association, when they looked at the governor's budget, it was actually very promising and very optimistic because there were a lot of increases in Chapter 70 and different things like that. It's a little bit less than, I think, what the town was projecting for aid, so we'll talk about that. And I'll have more information for you later about that to figure out where we're at with the FY24 budget and whether adjustments will need to be made or not. I would say my recommendation still continues to be that our request is appropriate and it's what we need, and so if we're not able to meet that, then it's going to have to involve potentially a reduction or utilizing other funds. Another thing that I thought might be good for all of you to hear about this, something that in the organization that Jenny is a part of, our Director of School Finance, the MASBO, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officers, earlier in, was that like a month ago maybe when they, or it could have been even two months ago when they, two months ago when they had sent out a survey of all of the school business officers to get a sense as to what the different allocations were for their preliminary increases in their budget. So it was something very interesting to hear that the range, I left it on my desk, but I remember, is, I don't remember how many there were, but there was maybe about 50 or 60 school districts that were, 58, okay. The lowest allocation was 2.75, and the highest, I think, is 14.53. Is that, are you looking at that?
I'm trying to look.
Yeah, I think it's, so it's, so the range, 2.75 to 14, I think it was 14.53. It's a huge range. The average was 6.07, and we're the third to the lowest. So we're 2.923. So that's other interesting data points when we're looking at, wait a second, what is it? When we're looking at them, we wanted to look at the history of our requests, too. And so I feel like although we need to work together to, you know, determine how we can best utilize the funds that we have, it was helpful again to see that in context and to see even the history of our allocations to see that, you know, I don't think our, I don't think our request was out of the ordinary. So that's for tomorrow. We'll have that discussion. We'll have more information for you.
Can you, can, is it possible, Jenny, or to get access to that data or the, is there a table or something? I just think it'd be interesting.
Yeah, I can share that with you. I mean, we have, it's just, the survey was just then dumped into an Excel sheet.
Yeah, just be interesting to.
And then, oh, the last thing that I was gonna share with you was the weather decisions for tomorrow, right? So I was hoping.
You're gonna, you're gonna share right now?
I would love to. I know. No, you do look, you look, you look concerned already. And it's different. Both of you have different, you have different reactions. Fascinating.
This is very important for seniors. It's different for seniors. It hits different.
So, I know, we, I joke about it. So I am very irritated that I was not able to send out a call before this meeting saying what we might be doing. I do think that there's still a possibility that it could change from one thing to another. So I am gonna be making the official decision in the morning, unfortunately. However, I am not a betting person, but if you were a betting individual, I would most likely assume that you'll at least be getting extra sleep, if not having no school. A lot of people around us have been able to kinda connect with the people they need to, and so you'll see like little things popping up, but I know a lot of other, because we're right on that belt. Westford is right in this really nasty spot where I know our DPW is really, they're really optimistic and confident that they've treated the roads well, so, you know, that they think that the roads might be okay. We're just concerned about the timing.
Yeah.
So now, your faces, though. So is that, is that good or bad?
I just thought it was funny that we know before everyone else.
Okay, that's. And anybody paying attention right now, they would actually, they can be prepping, but.
Yeah, I don't know if any students are watching the Monday night school committee.
You know what, but maybe, maybe it would have been a good idea.
Right, they would know. They would have the intel.
Um, I, yeah. No, I don't, I had a thought and then it just left my brain, but yeah. No, it's good.
No official decisions have been made. Don't announce anything on social media.
Looking at my five inches right now for what I can say.
Oh, I remember what I was gonna say.
Starting around nine o'clock, so let's.
The snow day calculator always lowballs it, and this time it was at 88. So for them to give it that high, they, and they always lowball a ton, so.
I actually, I'm curious, more people don't look at that, because I've looked at that for as long as I can remember.
Oh, every, yeah, we're always checking it. Someone was like, oh, did it go up 2%?
So I'm confident that there will be a call of some kind, but I don't know which direction.
Do you know when, what time?
It'll be before 6:00 AM.
A nice 5:00 AM.
Between 5:30 and 6:00 is our goal.
Okay. So I have one update. Prior to the school vacation, I had sent out a communication to NavNassett families. While we're very sad to see Susan Dubois head into the world of retirement, we always look forward to opportunities where we can hire replacements and go through a thorough process, and it certainly is just that when it comes to filling a principal position. So we are looking for volunteers from parents and staff at the NavNassett school to participate on the advisory committee, and would love to have one volunteer from the school committee if anybody is interested. The dates, the dates for that part of the commitment are Wednesday, March 15th, and then March 22nd through the 24th. There's three days in a row where we will be interviewing. So you can let me know if anybody is wanting to join us. And in terms of the entire process, the posting closes on March 10th, and then there are a couple of rounds of interviews, and then there will be meet and greets with families and with staff on or around March 30th. So the hope is that the superintendent makes his final decision at the very end of the month or very early April, so we can have somebody new in place.
Have, when did the posting go up?
It will have been up for three weeks.
Have we many applicants? I'm just kinda curious, you know?
Yep, so we have 11 applicants as of right now.
Did you say when you want people to reach out if they want to be part of the search committee? Like, do you have a deadline for that?
Well, the deadline for, for parents and staff is tomorrow afternoon. But in terms of school committee, if that's what you're talking about, then anytime really before March 15th. Yeah. So maybe by the end of the week if somebody's interested.
Yeah, so if you're interested, just email me and then we'll pass that on.
Okay.
That way, if we get more than one, then we will, we'll talk.
Right, that sounds good.
I can have a placeholder. There's a placeholder for school committee.
There's a spot that, and we appreciate that. I know, I know the committee appreciates that.
Yeah.
We're excited for the search. Thank you. Anything else? How about school committee updates? Vacation week was quiet.
For a change. I was just gonna add on to the budget information about a potential meeting with the finance committee. This board is probably going to meet with the finance committee, looks like maybe next Monday, March 6th. So once we know that for sure, we'll obviously post an agenda and stuff, but as follow-up to the state information. That's all.
Yeah, good.
I was gonna interrupt and add it, but I just.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. I forgot that.
Yeah, pencil that in. It was in the email last week, so hopefully people can do that. And we've talked, if we feel like we need to meet as a committee before that joint meeting, we would just try to meet for a few minutes before, or try to squeeze one in before. I don't, I don't know if that would be the case. We'll just kinda have to see where things are. I'm not anticipating that, but we may do that.
Is the expectation that that meeting would be online or in person?
At least hybrid.
At least hybrid, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I would, I would bet online, but who knows?
All the budget hearings so far have been all virtual.
Right.
So.
We have a joint board meeting in person in.
I think, anyway, yeah, we'll see.
Yeah, it would, it would need to be a hybrid at the least, we know that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we are, oh, student representatives, skipped over you.
So excited about the weather discussion.
Okay, so firstly, the sports seasons are coming to a close for winter. So that in general is exciting, sad, you know, lots of emotions. The second thing we wanted to update you guys about was the discussion with Mrs. Wallace and Mr. Antonelli about the cafeteria in WA, the process, the process of buying specifically, or options available, stuff like that. So a couple of stuff have been done specifically after our discussion, or after her discussion with them. That's really exciting is, one is we've had a board posted with information about what is free, which we discussed so that students know their options ahead of time.
For breakfast.
For breakfast, for breakfast near the snack shack that we have. Another thing is that.
Oh, also there are vegetarian labels on the salads. So the lines aren't all congested. People trying to figure out if there's meat inside of it or not.
And then we are also looking at making the menu more accessible for a lot of students, you know, posting ahead of time, like updating that so that we can know what's, what's for lunch in the coming weeks, just because I believe it hasn't been updated a ton. So that is some of the stuff that we're looking at doing.
And it would let students know if there's meat in it, and we're considering having it shown on the TV screens in the cafeteria, but we realized the words would be way too small for that, so we're not really sure yet.
Yeah, so definitely working out like a couple of solutions. And then, yeah, the last thing that I had to say was the juniors are now, starting as of yesterday, or as of today, they are allowed to start booking their junior meetings to get the college process started for them. So for any parents of juniors, I just wanted to let you guys know. And then.
So on Wednesday, this Student Advisory Committee, SUGO, and Legislative Council, people from all those groups, are going to go to the two middle schools and talk with them of what they think of the grade configurations. And so we're going to have like three main ideas we wanna talk with them about. The transportation and the social aspect of what that would look like for three different ideas. Do you remember what the last one was?
I don't remember the third one, but we have to finish preparing our presentation for it.
So that's exciting.
One, one of the things I think we were hoping is just even their perceptions about the transitions between the schools. So that might be your third thing.
I think that's going under the social aspect because.
Yeah, we have like a bunch of, we're just planning on breaking out with them into like small focus groups to get all their opinions, and under each like section of information, like transportation or social impact. And I'm forgetting the other ones right now, but we have a couple of many questions.
And then at the end, we're going to have a survey, asking them just ultimately which option they think is best, and then just any additional feedback they have.
And then ultimately, we'd hope to present to all of you guys about our findings.
And.
Is that with middle school government groups or open to anyone? Okay.
Middle school government.
I think there were, they, there are around 30 students in those.
In Blanchard, and then Stony, we got word that there's about 60 of them, so should be a good pool.
And there are four, four or five of us going to each school.
Cool.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And the last thing I wanted to say is that scheduling is coming up for classes next year. We don't have to do that because we're seniors, but the eighth graders are excited to be taking classes at WA.
Yeah.
And that's all we have.
Fantastic. Thank you guys so much. Good stuff. We'll be looking forward to hearing what you learn this week with middle schools. And people don't know, but they have been working like over their break. They met, and you met multiple times over break, I believe, to plan all this. So just really impressive effort and really engaged and energized group, so it's been fun to see.
I think it's great, too, because this is something then that you can continue with other topics. Like, this is a great reason to be doing this, to kinda get their input on the, you know, the feasibility study. But I think the fact that you've done this and you have this structure in place, it really allows for more of those conversations to take place in the future, which is great.
Thanks.
Yeah, both, both middle school principals and the faculty advisors have been very supportive of it. So I love the idea of continuing it in the future.
Thank you again. We are on to our first item under business, which is we've invited some members of the Town DEI Committee to come talk to us about the upcoming ballot question on Indigenous Peoples' Day. That comes with a request for us to take a vote on it, and we'll get a little background here. So I invite you all to the microphone. Scott, I was looking for you on Zoom. I thought you were gonna be on Zoom. I kept looking for you, and you weren't showing up, so I'm glad to see you're here. Good to see you. I'm glad. We'll take you however we can.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. We should probably introduce ourselves, I suppose.
Yes, please.
For the record, but I do have a comment about the snow day, by the way. I'm Joe Diamond, Vice Chair of the DEI Committee.
Scott Parkness.
Quinble.
Also members, and we make a part of a work group that focuses on Indigenous Peoples' Day. I work with, by day, I work with a group of nonprofits, and we were on the phone today with the, with the directors of those organizations, and they say by far the most consequential decision they ever make is about a snow day. And it's the hardest decision some of them make, and it's the one that nobody wants to participate in.
No, nobody, nobody seems to, well, people, yeah, yeah, people do wanna help.
They wanna help.
They have opinions.
I mean, especially like when you're forced to go day and the next day Nassett happens.
Right, it's always fun. Thanks for bringing that up.
So we appreciate your leadership on all things, including that.
Yeah. We're all glad we don't make it.
So on behalf of the committee, we're really pleased to be here to engage in a process that we have actually been involved with since 2021, would you say, or is it before that?
2020, the fall 2020 is when the fall, Tom Meeting gave DEI the request to propose something about Indigenous Peoples' Day to the Select Board.
And it was right, it was their, sort of their charge to, to the DEI Committee to, if you will, address the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day being established in Westford. And so we've taken that very seriously, and so it was one of the, one of the first things that was sort of within our, our agenda, if you will. We take it seriously also because we know that our role is to be advisors to the school committee and to the Select Board. Essentially, what we've developed, and there's a process that both Kuhn and Scott can, can help us with, but through a series of meetings and discussions with Select Board, we propose a ballot question that is now in the hands of the Select Board. They've sort of accepted it, if you will. After, after a long discussion with, with the DEI Committee, a couple of votes, and finally, a presentation in August to the, to the Select Board. The ballot question reads this way, "Shall the Westford Select Board declare the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, superseding local references to Columbus Day, and recommend that it be observed by the people of Westford with appropriate exercises in the schools and otherwise to acknowledge the history of genocide and discrimination against Indigenous peoples, and to recognize and celebrate the thriving cultures and continued resistance and resilience of Indigenous peoples and their tribal nations." This, this language was drawn from a few different sources, and we thought it was important, and both Kuhn and Scott actually spoke about this during the meetings, that it was important not only to say what we hope will happen, and this will be in May, by the way, of the vote, but also some of the reasons behind it. So important for us during this period of a reckoning when it comes to different intolerances and our efforts to, to inspire belonging, that we, that we take this up. Like 20 other cities and towns across Commonwealth have done, several other states, including Maine and Vermont, and then other states sort of outside have, have done similar, similar things outside of New England. As I said, what we're involved with now is sort of an awareness raising process. We've engaged in a few things, more than a few things. There was a survey that was prepared and answered. It was an online survey. We've conducted an online information session, which we sent a link to for you. We've had various statements published at the town website and other places about, about this work. We're reaching out to both the Select Board and the school committee for support of this and for your perspective on this. Scott has a lot more experience in town government than, than I do. I did serve on the finance committee at one point, and it's not unusual. In fact, it is probably expected that boards like Select Board, School Committee, Finance Committee will weigh in on important questions of the day. In fact, and both Scott and Kuhn have made this point, that the voters in town, I think, look to these boards for a perspective on these matters. And so we wanted to be aligned with that by bringing this to you. We understand as well that this is a two-step process, and this, today is probably an opportunity for us to update you and certainly ask your questions and have some discussion, which we'll, we'll get to that soon. And then we hope we respectfully request your support for this. We've stayed in touch with some folks from the IDP community, Indigenous Peoples' community, and other Indigenous Peoples' groups. We will be updating the March Town Meeting as to our progress since their directive. And then we also will be working through media, local media, the Westfords Community Access Cable Television, local papers, and social media, even the town website, to provide more information. And that's what we intend to do, is provide information, not to be as polemic, but to be more informational, to make sure that folks are as informed as we are about why this is so important. As Scott mentioned, this was born of Town Meeting's request to us. The Select Board did recommend that this be put to the voters. And I think their, their point, in fact, I was just reviewing, if you had a chance also to look at the Select Board meeting that we participated in, the recording. The chairperson of the Select Board said that she thought it was really important that this be put to the voters rather than the Select Board, that this was so critical, that we would give the voters a chance to express their voice. Scott does a better job of this than I do. What do you, what do you think is so important about that, Jen, as a?
Well, I actually think that I have a slight difference of opinion. I think leadership is what, what makes progress occur. I think leadership in, like, your leaders of the community and what you do pushes forward things. The majority isn't always the right answer to issues about how minorities are treated or how minorities are viewed. But here we are, and now we're gonna try to get the, hopefully, we'll, we'll, we'll see how the majority of the town residents, the vote, will, will view this. It's not a slam dunk. It's, there are people that are opposed to this. There are people that say taking down statues of Jefferson Davis is rewriting history. My view is it doesn't rewrite history, it's just we're not celebrating the bad things of history. Bad, in my quotes. But that, what, where we're at is we're looking for the leadership in the town to lead on this issue, and hopefully you guys can come to some agreement about how you feel.
Kuhn, did you?
Yeah, the DEI did an online survey first, and also last year, we did a listening session. The results also are sent in to the school committee. From the result, you can see that the town is quite divided on this issue. And I feel like, we hope that the school committee can weigh in. If you are willing to express your opinion, whether you support it or you do not support it, have a healthy conversation, and hopefully that will help guide the town through, through the process. So what, what's the survey, um, results?
It's in the package.
It's in the package, that's what we said.
They were mixed, right? They were mixed.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say they're mixed. The, the survey itself was an online survey. I think an unintended effect was that people from outside of Westford also weighed in. So we're not, it's not, wasn't perfectly clear.
Oh.
But the results of the information session, which I think were all Westford residents, was also the same, that the results were mixed. I just wanna read something from a group that was of interest to us. There are a variety of groups that are supporting Indigenous Peoples' Day. One of them is a group, Italian Americans for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we, and they say, we, at their website, "We honor ancestors by honoring Indigenous people, by observing Indigenous Peoples' Day. We celebrate the diverse histories and cultures of this land's first peoples and their many contributions to modern society. We correct false histories, we begin to make amends for past atrocities, and support Indigenous struggles for justice. We also honor our own ancestors who persevered in this country despite being victimized for their ethnicity." We also honor our own ancestors who persevered in this country despite being victimized for their ethnicity." So I think for us, one of the, one of the bottom lines is that it is, you know, during this period of reckoning that we're engaged in across the country and in, in Westford and Massachusetts, we wanted to make a clear statement about Indigenous Peoples' Day and its importance. And then we'll see how the town responds. And we believe that it's part of our role to continue to raise awareness and, and come to see, see you, so.
And you alluded to this, but I thought I would just remind folks who might be watching in the committee, we like to, we've been doing this for a number of years. If there's, if there's a vote, if it were impossible, we like to split that over, over two meetings. And the reason we do that, we, you know, we can use that first meeting for information, but it really gives the public a chance to let us know how they feel. You know, we have public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and so, you know, they might have seen this on the agenda, but not necessarily known what exactly was going to be said or talked about. This gives them a chance, they can come to the next public comment, they can email us, because now they know that we will likely be taking a vote on this at the next meeting. I say likely because it will require somebody to make a motion, but I, I suspect that will happen, that we will get a motion in a second, that we will take a vote of, of, you know, whether to support, support or not support the ballot measure. And the other thing, just process-wise, I would say is, when you first approached us about it, as with anything that we might put on the agenda, the question for me was, okay, okay, does this make sense? I mean, you had already gone through that process, yeah, it makes sense for them to weigh in, but I had a sort of, you know, I'm like, okay, does this make, yeah, and I, and I really, I believe it does. I mean, there's a direct educational component to this, whether it be just educating the community, but also looking at the next generation of students and how they view who we honor and how we honor them. And so I think, I even think there's an opportunity in this process to engage students, regardless of how people feel, just to engage in this conversation. And I think, you know, I'm curious if our students have comments this week, or at this meeting or at the next meeting as well, but thinking about how, how our schools might engage with this as well. I know our Director of Equity Curriculum and Instruction, I think, is, is joining us virtually. And so I know it's something that we're all keeping an eye on. I would imagine the, the ghostwriter, the student newspaper at Westford Academy might, you know, be interested in, in looking at this. I mean, they have in the past as well. There have been articles there. So just tying it together with the educational component, I think makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, that really resonates with our, our overall mission as well. I don't know if you all had a comment about, about Chris's, Chris's observation. I actually do reach out to, to Magali about this, because I do think, overall, it, it resonates with what we're hearing from across school systems, that we just need to dig deeper into history. And we need to dig deeper into history that's important for the people living in the community. And so this, to the extent that this is helpful, it's kind of a teachable moment, we think, too. And we've always talked about this, and again, Scott could have been better, more articulate in this than I have, but when we first started talking about this question, it wasn't easy to get to a point where we, we knew exactly what we wanted to propose. There are lots of different points of view. We did finally ultimately have a unanimous vote on this particular language. But we always said out loud and to ourselves and in the meeting, that the process was as important as the result. To the extent this could be a process that would support the community's understanding, provide some more information, offer some varying perspectives and a further deep appreciation of history, and that itself would be an achievement. We do hope, though, that this is passed.
I was going to say, who has questions, but can I ask one more question that I think might help set the table for the conversation? Which is, it might be good to clarify for all of us what this change would mean from a practical standpoint, right? I mean, not just from a practical standpoint, I think there's, there's another impact to it that's not just practical, but, you know, people might say, well, if this gets approved at Town Meeting Vote, what happens then?
What, what, in the ballot, ballot question?
Sorry.
Do you want to address that?
Well, look, we, where we started, or where this whole movement started, was not to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day as so much to talk about what Columbus did to the Indigenous people and replace that celebration of someone who, to say, acted in a flawed manner is, is really being very nice. And so where we are is not trying to add another holiday, but to take Columbus and view what he did and how he impacted the Indigenous people of the Caribbean. And, 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 and not make that a celebration, not celebrate the fact of what, what that group did. As a matter of fact, sometimes I talk about, things were different in those times. But he was brought back to court for what he did. He, he was not treated as a hero, even in his own day. And if we want to talk about who discovered North America, maybe we should, if that's a celebration, maybe we should have Vikings Day. But it's, it's, he didn't even discover North America. He discovered South America, regardless of that. It, it was, it all started as a reaction to what he did to the Indigenous people and what he started to the Indigenous people of the Americas. And so some people say we should have a separate holiday, and it's sort of like Martin Luther King Day. In the South, we still celebrate the Confederate heroes on Martin Luther King Day, and it's not celebrated as Martin Luther King Day. And in some states like Florida, they have two separate holidays. They have Martin Luther King Day and then Jefferson Davis Day, to give equal voice to, to the Confederate and the people that were, person that was trying to strive for justice. So that's where we started, or that's where we didn't start it. We, we just, this has been a movement that are bills in the legislature to do this. Haven't been passed yet, but the mayor of Boston declared, Boston, that do that. And that, that's where we are. So you'll hear people say we should have it on a different day, but that's not what the purpose of this movement is. It's not to make a different day that we celebrate Indigenous people. It's to stop celebrating what Columbus did.
May I add something? Yeah. I think like the, Chris's question is about the impact of the, why, what if we changed this day? Yeah. Scott gave a very good explanation on one side, the impact, what it means. On the other side, the different opinion is about like why we should keep Columbus Day or keep Columbus and Indigenous people together. Reason we celebrate Columbus Day is not because we, he's, 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 he's behaving. It's because he's an explorer. He helped discover, he helped advance science. He helped advance geology. And that's why we celebrate Columbus Day. Isn't the reason, like, right now we are judging him using a modern day moral standard, judging a person six hundred years ago. That is like, like, it's like somewhat like a judging a person, like if you're using a current day healthcare standard or judging a person living in six hundred years, that would be probably say, okay, this is not a very hygiene, but they do not have access to that standard. So that, that's why I feel like if we, if we judging him with current, current stand, moral standard, we basically say, okay, you are responsible for the genocide of the Indigenous people. But on the other hand, if Columbus didn't, if not Columbus discovered the, like, North America, or if some, somebody else discovered North America, what happened to Indigenous people? It's not, it's really, I would say it's probably same thing, similar thing what happened to Indigenous people. And that I would say, yeah, it's like, it's really not Columbus fault causing the Indigenous people the suffering. It is, it is just like the era. They are living, it's like they are not as, as standard as we are right now today. So that's what, that's why I say, we, I, I would say I would support Indigenous Day. The reason, because we want to recognize suffering of the Indigenous people. And I would support combination of Columbus Day and Indigenous people together, but replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Day. I would, I would say that is you are blaming Columbus, we, using, judging Columbus using a modern day standard that is like, couldn't have existed six hundred years ago. That's, that's a different side story.
The ballot measure, sorry, yes, ballot measure is to replace.
It is, to supersede.
Okay. I do want to get to committee questions and comments, Valerie, you go.
Actually, I mean, mine was sort of organically, I was just going to ask about sort of the superseding language and how you evolved to get there, but I feel like this last discussion point filled that in, so.
It's language from one of the other communities, I forget which one. You know, I, I think the points we're making are, reflect the discussion we had, which was wide-ranging. I think what it comes down to, for me anyway, in the end, is that this is, this is an opportunity to, to raise up the importance of Indigenous people in Massachusetts, to recognize how they're suffering. And to also recognize that in some sense, they were never discovered. They were here already, so.
Chris?
Yep.
I have a question. So, so this meeting is like here the information from the DI committee, and then next session, we will have a chance to actually, to fully discuss and actually possibly have a vote.
Right.
Okay. Now I will reserve my comments for the next meeting.
Okay. I mean, you can make them now too, but yeah, but next week would probably be more of the intercommittee discussion with the vote, because we may get more information. We may get more, you know, input from the public, too, Sean.
Joe, I know there was reference to it. How many other communities in the state have adopted this?
There are twenty.
Twenty.
I can read them. Emers, Arlington, Bedford, Belmont, Brookline, Cambridge, East Hampton, Falmouth, Great Barrington, Holyoke, Marblehead, Mashpee, Maine, Melrose, Newton, Boston included, Northampton, Provincetown, Salem, Somerville and Wellesley.
Thank you.
And have they superseded Columbus Day, or, or is that a mix of? Because I know some communities kind of have incorporated both, I think.
My understanding is that they, that they did supersede. I can get you that information, but this was from, uh...
I think that list is the ones that superseded.
Superseded, yeah.
And Maine and Vermont also superseded along with other states. There are some states that did a combination, but Maine and Vermont have a, have Indigenous Peoples' Day, replacing, superseding. To your question, Chris, I'm sorry, as a practical matter, it's, it's not clear what, what would occur in Westford. I mean, the, the ballot question itself calls for exercises in schools and otherwise, but certain acknowledgements. And so we would be more than happy to, to support any, any or all of that, but that's what we're hoping, that, that this would start another process.
And I know, I think it was at that Select Board meeting, I remember listening to it and there was a, there was a question about the practical, the practicalities of it and like, well, wait, we already have, you know, Columbus Day is a federal holiday. I know town council weighed in. And I, I did some looking after that and some reading, and my understanding, because he made a comment that it would still officially be, officially be Columbus Day, because it's a federal holiday, and so like paychecks, if, if they cite, I don't know if paychecks cite holidays for pay or whatever, would have to, but from my understanding, that's not, that's not accurate, because federal holidays are really just for federal employees. It only impacts federal employees. It means nothing at the state or municipal level. So I just wanted to clarify that, that I think Westford is free to call this holiday what, what it wants, and whatever the people of Westford decide is what it will be called regardless of what the federal holiday.
And I've been reading on, upon that, a lot of this is new to me, and I, I discovered that even as a federal holiday, not all states kind of celebrate it either, so it's a, it...
If you're not a federal employee, your state or locality may choose.
May choose to, yeah, so that was quite interesting. That was news to me.
All right. I appreciate your time coming here to talk to us about this tonight and open this discussion. I appreciate your soliciting the feedback and opinions from the school committee, since the, the resolution does, the ballot question does mention schools and that this would impact how, how these discussions take place in schools. I, I think it, it is evident that history is more nuanced than what I was taught when I was in school. And when my student, my children went through Westford Academy, we had some really interesting discussions around the dinner table about this issue, based on what they were learning in school versus what I'd learned. And we had some really fascinating discussions about it, and really healthy discussions about it. And I think that's exactly the type of discussion that we, as a, as a school committee and as a school system, want to promote, that critical thinking, that nuanced analysis of history. And I, I hope that the, the committee and the community would be supportive of this ballot measure. Our committee has in the past taken up resolutions in support of important issues. For example, the Student Opportunity Act, and there was a, I'm forgetting the exact ballot question number, but it was a state ballot.
Three, I remember it was three. I just remember if yes or no was.
Yes. It was, it was on three, in support of our transgender students and families and residents. So we do have a precedent that we've taken a stand on, on these issues when they're consistent with our values and priorities of inclusion and belonging as a school system. So I appreciate all of the efforts of the Town DEI Committee. It's worth reminding people that this is a, this is a board that was jointly sponsored by the school committee and the Select Board, and you were charged with this task, and it has been contentious at times and it has been difficult at times. It's been a long process. It's been a thorough process, so I support and applaud your efforts. And I hope that Massachusetts, that Westford will join the other 20 towns in Massachusetts as that list grows that are recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day in their town and schools, and I hope Westford will join that list.
We hope so too, and I think the process itself is, as we, as we engage in it, seems more and more worthwhile for all those reasons you mentioned. And as we talked about when I was here to talk about the anti-Semitism proposal, we're lucky to be in a community like Westford, in a school system like Westford's, which is so open and has a framework for equity in its curriculum. So we, you know, we, all to say, I think, in a broad sense, we're all on the same page. And we hope, you know, as I say, we hope, really hope for your support.
Other comments?
I just think the fact that specifically the wording of the ballot question calls in, you know, the education part. I think it's important then that school committee does look at doing some sort of rela, resolution or vote one way or the other, because it's, I think it's important for voters to know in advance, based on the wording, you know, our take in terms of, because obviously we would be looking at, you know, invol, if, if it gets passed, how does that impact our curriculum and stuff? So I actually think it's something we probably should be considering, just with the nature of the wording, and being so specific for, regarding the education within the town.
I think I have a couple of thoughts on this. I've just, just as everyone was talking, I was going through my old A push notes to find how our curriculum, or what notes, what I got from what our curriculum was teaching about Columbus. And I highlighted something that said, his positive recognition though was responsible for permanent interaction. And I highlighted something that said, his positive recognition though was responsible for permanent interaction between people for the first time in history. That's what our book says, that's what we were taught. But I think that I just want to say, I want to give our students more credit. And when I say this, I mean that we can recognize two things. We can recognize someone's contribution to history while understanding that their glorification is not necessary. We do this several times throughout history, or we do this several times when looking at figures in history, that we can understand their contribution. We can have our own opinions about it. But I think when it comes to Columbus. By having Columbus Day, we can still, or by taking away Columbus Day and replacing with Indigenous People's Day. Students, we are still able to understand his importance. We've been learning Columbus's name since third grade. We know the rhymes, we, we've been learning about Columbus Day since third grade. We can also understand that it is not necessary to glorify what I consider is a genocide. And when I say I consider that, it's through the primary sources, through the graphs, through the statistics, we've learned through our history classes. And I remember specifically when we were opening up this discussion, our history teachers love to start this discussion. What they'd love to ask the specific question, whether or not we should have Columbus Day or Indigenous People's Day. We have that, I remember that very question was asked in our classroom. And we all were giving our opinions and this was right after we read, we finished our Columbus unit. And I think at that point, the students are some of the most educated individuals in Westford about that subject at that time. We have the most information about what he has done in a positive aspect and in a negative aspect. And I think it was almost unanimous that it should be Indigenous People's Day. Yeah, I think it would be, I know it's way past now, we're definitely in a different set of, a different point in history. But it would have been really eye opening for everyone to hear that discussion happen at the beginning of the year, when everyone sort of gives their opinions. And I think when we talk about our curriculum matching up with what we are upholding to the community. All of our textbooks recognize, and they're not recognizing it to the full extent as well. Like I remember last year, I went to my teacher and I was like, this is not making sense. The textbook says that this commander was super strong and then the Indigenous people were so like in awe of his power that they just surrendered to him. And I thought that was really interesting wording. And he was like, oh, you think they surrendered to him? Or do you think that they killed almost all their people and they were, had nothing left to do but surrender? So even then, our curriculum still needs some work. If our history teachers themselves are telling us the version of history that is backed by primary sources and all these sort of things. We've looked at the primary sources where Columbus is talking about his, his observations of the Native American people. And we concluded what we wanted to conclude from that, about his intent, about what he knew and what he was trying to achieve through his portrayal of Native American people, right? When we discuss what was okay for that timeframe. You know, we are looking at it with a modern lens, but in A push, we are forced to go back and really understand what were the motives at that timeframe. And I think that that's a really important thing to look at. And at least in our class, we had concluded that he was aware of what he was doing. Like we must acknowledge that he was fully aware of the extent of what he was doing. So that was all sort of what I had to say about that.
Can I just, there's a lot to applaud in what you just said, to highlight a couple of things. One is, almost all of those students in that A push class last year will be of legal voting age at town meeting, just pointing that out. So the other is just, I just want to underscore the, what you started with, which is, you hear a lot about erasing history, erasing history. We're not erasing history, right?
Yeah.
This is, there's a big difference, history, between history and, as you said, glorification of exalting, of building statues, of naming holidays after people. And I, I do want people to understand that, like this does not erase anything from history. This is a value decision of a, of a community of who are we going to glorify? And I think you said it really well, and just, I wanted to highlight that.
Amazing.
I also see a lot of lack of knowledge in the surveys where, I was looking through it, a lot of the answers are, I don't know, or I don't understand why. You know what I'm saying? And yeah, so I don't know whether they would like to speak to that.
Well, first of all, I know you're a student representative to this committee, but feel free to join.
All of the committees?
At any time, and you too. No, I think, I think we learn more and more, not only through more and more sources that have a, have a sort of more balanced view. But, but also through discussion. And for us, I think we, we all agree that this is a complex topic with many layers. But that, you know, ultimately, what it, what it does is, it, at least, I guess to me, it, it raises up such an important aspect of our history that has been, that has been ignored. And that is the history of Indigenous people. And so it's not necessarily a question of, it's not a competition, it's more, I think, a question of balance. Thank you for your comment.
And I do want to point out that when we're just at school and saying, oh, what are you doing on this day? A lot of students already just say, oh, what are you doing on Indigenous, Indigenous People's Day? Not many of us say Columbus Day. And I think it's because we are educated with our history classes to know and have opinions on what we should celebrate on that day.
So what you're trying to say is that the academy is always, is already streets ahead of the rest of the town on this issue.
Well, I think the schools are, because I honestly, I would say that, that the conversation has been taking place for a long time, age appropriately, all through the, all through the district and just like, because it's an authentic conversation to be having. And whether the, probably the most direct impact will be, what does our calendar say?
Yeah.
Right.
You know?
And I think, I think we struggled with that, the last calendar, as to there was.
So the town had made a decision.
Yeah, there was some talk in this committee as to having it replaced as Indigenous Persons, People's Day on the calendar. And I think we had to defer, we ended up deferring to the town.
Right.
So. And, and I think that that discussed, I'll save most of my comments for next week. But I think that discussion that we had surrounding the calendar and being as inclusive as possible and how much we kind of labored through trying to make a calendar that was inclusive as possible to all populations within our school district is very relevant to this discussion insofar that like, we have a responsibility as a school committee to convey that to our students and to the community at large. So I'm looking forward to discussing it more next week, but.
And we talked about, I mean, you mentioned a desire for a resolution because that would let us go into a little more detail about what, what this means to us as a school district. Maybe explain some of the rationale about the impacts. I mean, we can do that, if, if people are interested in bringing a resolution to the next meeting, I would, I would certainly welcome that. We can always do a simple, a simple vote on just support or not support of, you know, of the ballot question. But it could also be in the form of something lengthier with a little more verbiage around, around it as well. So I keep looking at you because you brought it up. I know, I know in the past we have been like, Paul, do you want to come up? But it doesn't have to be that, I don't want to put that, I think if there's interest, and if you don't know, I mean, you can talk to me and, and if, if a couple of people come to me and have an interest, we can figure out if it makes sense for a couple of people to, to share, share their writing. But I think I'm open to it.
I, I can see there being value in, in something written that people can reference as the election day draws near and that they can come back and reference as opposed to maybe trying to find a video and whether or not we kind of verbally support it or not.
Or just a vote, or a vote tally from this committee that, which may not convey the conversation and nuance and the sentiments of the committee. So I, I think it makes sense.
And that is consistent with what we did for the Student Opportunity Act and, and for, I believe it was yes on three. The, the transgender ballot question from a couple of years ago. Yeah, that is, that is certainly consistent.
Just a, like a formality question, Joe, or is there, how is this conveyed? Assuming that we do vote on this, right, how is that conveyed to the general populace, right? It doesn't, that doesn't end up on the ballot, right? School committee, it would be in an informational handout or something?
Right, well, that's a really good question. In the past, when we've taken actions or have worked with the town, the town managers asked for information that would be posted.
Okay.
And if you're open to that, then that would be something that I think we'd like to do. That is, that's one way to generally inform folks. We, we saw it, and this was both Coon and Scott thought this was important, that we would seek the perspective of the two boards because that would help the voters to think about this. And that, and that we would provide that information whenever we could in a responsible way. So that's just one way. I think when we update town meeting in March, we would talk about it then, just like the finance committee says, this item on the warrant, that item on the warrant, we approve or we don't approve. So that it would be part of the public record and we would, we want to sort of alert people to it.
So you're getting a time slot at town meeting, it sounds like?
We're trying.
If only we, if only we did. Last thoughts or questions? Okay, well, that was a really good conversation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're going to do it again and come, I mean, it'll be different, but, and you're welcome to come back or view us or whatever, whatever makes sense for you folks.
If you, if you would like us to join you in any capacity, we're happy to be here for questions, but it sounds like this will be sort of your own discussion.
You'd be welcome to be here if, and if something came up, we would likely turn to you, so, but it's up to you.
Very good, and so what's the date of the next meeting?
The thirteen, March thirteenth. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, I feel like there should be a drum roll.
Strategic district improvement.
I don't want to drop, that's.
Just drum roll.
Just drum roll.
I'm going to hope that my computer battery stays with me long enough to, if not, you, you have, you all have it.
I'll pull it up too.
I have twenty-one, what do you have?
I don't know, I've got to get eighteen, okay, we'll see, we can do this.
Thanks.
So what you see in your packet is the, the draft, I was going to say, Gloria was just there, no, she's not. The draft of, of our proposed strategic district improvement plan for the years 2023 through 2026. Catherine and Gloria have worked closely with me on this, taking, collecting feedback from various stakeholder groups to help to make adjustments in the overarching mission, in the values, in the theory of language, then in our objectives and then the, the initiatives below. And so we've brought it to the DEI team on multiple occasions. All of the SACs weighed in on those original objectives. We didn't, I didn't present them with these initiatives, but we had shared the original objectives with them to have, have them kind of weigh in and look to prepare as to what would that look like in your school or thoughts like that. So we actually, and we had our webinar about it. And so I feel like there was some, overall, there were some questions, sometimes people would say, well, how are you going to do that? Right, that might be their, that might be their, their takeaway for something. But there seemed to be overwhelming support for these four objectives. And so then, the, one of the things that you'll see here, which is just a little bit, it is a two-page document. And so the, the templates that we've, that I've seen, that have been shared with me through NSEP really has been sort of bringing things down into a more manageable piece here. Because this will then play into the school improvement plans, which will be longer documents. We'll have, we talked about having an, an annual district action item plan, basically, it'd still be the same idea. But then taking this and saying, okay, well, what does this specific year look like? Because this is broken down, you know, this is carrying us over through 2026. And, oh, I just lost my train of thought, sorry. So the, but the idea of, oh, the other piece that we've talked about is creating like maybe a one-page infographic, you know? So we're like, this might be something that could be really even, you know.
Like a reference.
Yeah, just made more cohesive, right? And then that we could put up in different places. We, so if we work through it, that's just kind of the big overall piece of it. If we, if we look at the document here, the overarching mission and vision is, is similar to what our current mission and vision is. We updated it a little bit. We, we, I think we made it more reflective of our current, our, our current priorities. And we did change our core values. As you can see there, we, our elementary schools have really done a fantastic job developing what they call spirit. And I know when Principal Antonelli was doing his accreditation, his NIESC visit for the accreditation process for Westford Academy, he was really floored by one of the communities, it was either Andover North, Andover, I can't remember which one they did visit with other people though. They were floored by the, the district-wide core values that like spirit has become in the elementary schools was really, was well displayed and, and I think clear throughout, throughout the district. And so we, we brought this together and I will say, in our conversation with the DEI team, interestingly, the two middle schools shared a concern about changing their core values. And we talked about that, we talked about the fact that all of the elementary schools had different core values and they've kind of adjusted to this more district-wide language. It doesn't remove the individual personalities of the schools. But we are talking about really, and again, honestly, our, our students right now through middle school have been using this terminology for a number of years now. So it's really about just sort of carrying it through. So I feel like that's a really positive piece here. And then just the different initiatives that we looked at as we talked about the strategic objectives. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over the, the theory of action. The theory of action really is, what we talked about was making the theory of action for this specific document, right? Like if this document is, is articulate and, and specific, then it can lead into the school improvement plans, which then can have a direct result in classrooms. Because we already talked about that as we've changed this process, right? So if you all remember, we, historically, we've been doing the school improvement plans in the fall for that year. And we talked about that happens even after the teachers have already been thinking about their goals. So we said, well, when we work on this district improvement plan, we really want to do this right now in this timeframe so that the schools can now develop their school improvement plans for next year, but develop them this spring, to present to you this spring so that teachers can have access to both of these documents before they're thinking about the educator evaluation system, which is really the, the path that that should be following on. So that's really what the, the theory of action says. And so we did, we did change some of the wording a little bit as we, as you get into wordsmithing. And we tried to make them as actionable as possible, having really specific verbs in the initiatives. And then one conversation that we had with our last leadership team was just when we even look at the four objectives. I, we just added this, this notion of really ensuring equity is really in both one and two. Promoting social emotional wellbeing is existing in three, and then increasing our sustainability is really four. But we didn't want to make the document more specific with additional headers on there. But I think it just kind of helps people to break down, what, what are we really focusing on here? So that's how we've got to this place, that's what this, this now, this document, I think, has had a lot of eyes on it already. And now we're excited for your eyes to be on it, for you to have questions, feedback, thoughts, comments?
I do have one question on three point one. So it says, identify what can be removed from the curriculum. Is that the only thing we're doing? Because like sometimes you also want to update curriculum, not just like removing, right? So like in here, like just say removing, I feel like it doesn't really cover all the things we're doing.
Good point. So originally, this, even this whole third bullet was focusing on taking things, we, it was in response to the overwhelming information that we were putting so much on the plate. And so the original focus was even removing stuff. And then we changed the, the language in the. And then we changed the, the language in the third objective to talk about the, the pressure valve specifically. But I think you're right, identifying what can be removed, I, I think it could, we could say removed and updated. I would not want to say the word add, because again, the point being is that we're trying to not do that. And I will say, it also came out of, when we came, when we returned back to full-time in-person learning, even our, our initial hybrid, the first thing we really recognized was how much we did with less, how much we did with less time, how much we did with less access. And then when we started coming back into in-person, people started feeling like, oh, we have to get back to where we were. And so I think that's why the focus in the language has been on, I think we still, there's room to remove, but it's a good point.
Yeah.
I think, I think Janice Kirsted in one of our team DEI meetings kind of explained it really well, and that she was saying, if I remember correctly, that, you know, for example, she kind of reduced the amount of novels maybe that needed to be studied by a certain, by some of the grades. But what it meant was that they could get more in-depth in the, the novels that they did, so they were still learning the same skills and having the same kind of discussions, but they just didn't need to maybe spread themselves so thinly. So it's not like they're not, they're losing a skill, I think.
Yeah, I, I think, I think this is more like, there is a curriculum, like some piece I may actually replace with the best of my thought, my knowledge, right? And then some piece I decide like, hey, this is not important at all, like remove. But like, if, if just saying remove, you actually like reduce amount of like initiative the teacher can actually proactively take on to actually teach things in the, in a way which actually doesn't require you to have excessive time, but like give kids the freedom to actually to explore.
I think, yeah, cause I think I agree with the spirit of simplifying and, but I think you're right. I agree that you're limiting your options. And this is a very literal, you know, black and white on paper.
Right.
And so I think people will, will view that and be like, well, wait, when it could be modify, update, adapt. Because even in your, in, in example of novels, you could also see a situation where they do the seven, but I don't know, some are shorter, you know? Because we can really dig into this one in less time. I don't even know if that's a good example, but you know, I think, keeping the options open to, that's all you wrote, update. Adapt. Adapt.
You, I'm just writing out what you said.
I thought you had some new insights there, I was gonna go.
Anyway.
I also imagine that when the spirits of universal design for learning, you know, kind of.
Give you a different way of approaching things, right? Which may not be actually, I may not actually remove this chapter, but actually may do it a little bit differently.
Yeah. I think it all kind of tied in.
And I think as things evolve, um, new prior, new, new pieces of information or practices are prioritized. And if we just continue to keep everything at equal priority, something has to give, or we do none of it well. So some of the concern is if there are new areas that we're emphasizing, what are we able to de-emphasize in order to emphasize this well?
And it does go back to that, it, it, yes, and it goes back to the, the spirit of that, like, I, I do believe that as a district, we are such a high achieving district that we wanted to clearly say that we're maintaining our high standards, right? Because we don't want people to think that, oh, we just wanna do less. People just wanna do less. But what we, we do have a very real problem in that a large percentage of our students wear overworking as a badge of honor, and it's not healthy. And so we have to make a concerted effort to say, there is a better way. And that's why we lead with the word remove.
Yeah, 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 because you want to actually get away from like a mile wide, an inch deep kind of teaching, right? Because like, hey, teach everything, but like you don't really actually get deep into things. You may, may actually go a little bit like differently.
Right.
And it's a big thing for staff. I know you're talking about students, but I mean, we're hearing more and more about, you know, try, it's hard, you know, more and more teachers are leaving the profession because they feel, you know, under pressure, you know, constantly under, you know, so much to do, so. For, for staff, mental wellbeing, I think this is a huge point. So maybe we look at kind of re, rewording that a bit more to make it a bit more.
Well, even, I mean, even a suggestion of update, you know, what can be, I, I mean, I just think the difference is that we're also talking about the calendars and schedules while maintaining high expectations and standards. So it could still be identify what can be removed, I mean, if we like the Rs, it could always be removed and replace.
Reimagine.
I like reimagine.
I like that.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that.
Well, I'm, I'm being superseded by the people who are actually in the built room, doing it.
I, I was, I'm impressed with how these feel broad, yet like kind of specific at the same time, you know, like they're tang, they're really tangible.
Yeah.
But yet they cover so much of what I know we hold dear and value and what we wanna see in these coming years. So I'm just, I'm really, I'm really pleased and grateful for like what's come together here.
And this is a very user-friendly document. It is something that can be put in place versus one that covers every facet of public education. And it might be beautiful and lengthy, but it will sit on a shelf, either electronically or, you know, literally. And it's not, it's not a dynamic document and it's not actually used. This is something that we can.
You would refer to this, you would do that.
Right.
And, and I'm looking forward to the one-page one, but I mean, do we wanna make like a thirty-page one just to have that?
Are you volunteering to write? Of course.
I'm just gonna get chat, chat GPT to write for me.
Right? Well, don't have a conversation with it like a long time, cause that doesn't seem to go well.
I think it is helpful though for someone watching to understand what comes next, right? Like, and I know the theory of action sort of speaks to this, but when does it get into who, what this looks like, or who owns it and, and timelines, and like when, if you could just speak to like the next steps of how that will go?
So, the, the, the template that we've been using for our school improvement plans are somewhat similar to this, but they're very, they're more specific in terms of how is this being measured, who is responsible for this?
What resources are needed.
What resources are needed. So those, those, the school improvement plans that we've been using for a number of years now, we will continue to use. And you will see now, in, I think we've, we're talking about like April and May, you're going to see all of the schools come forward with their school improvement plans, which will have these objectives now outlined in that manner for their specific schools. And then we talked about having an annual district plan that looks like that.
Okay.
That would, not for this year, because this is what we did this year, but next year, before the schools come forward, it would kind of like be the, the beginning of the school improvement season. Right? You'll see the district improvement plan, this is, this is gonna be our focus for that next year, with, have it broken down a little bit more specifically too. Because the other piece is that this does need to be a living document, and within the next couple of years, some of these things might shift a little bit, right? Or different additional initiatives might be, might be added.
We, we definitely needed that district plan, I feel, cause some of this lives in leadership, some of it, and it's, you know, while the schools obviously put their, their plan into place for, you know, NAB and Christopher Lee and day and what have you, you know, some of these things like clearly kind of sit maybe with McGauley. And then obviously, you know, so in terms of taking ownership, or, you know, we've another one about, um, you know, investigating, researching, kind of electrifying the, the vehicles, you know, who would that be? I mean, that's clearly not a school. So we, we definitely need that kind of annual district plan to, I, I don't see it being much, you know? And I think we saw one of those kind of examples in some of the research we did with other districts where they just spelled out like those details of who owned it, so.
It's really breaking this up.
It'll look like a school, it'll be an annual plan for the district, but it'll follow that same school improvement plan template.
Yeah. Like they would take, you know, one point two and kind of list within one point two, all the action items that need to happen within that one area for that year.
Do we have templates on those? Is that, is that best practice? You know, do we have an idea in our head of?
Well, what we've been using, what we've been using for the school improvement plans, it, they're, I think they are, I think that is the pretty, that's the standard, best practice.
But for a district level? An annual district improvement plan?
Acton, Acton Boxwell have.
I will, I'm, I'm gonna say there are different places that have done it differently.
Differently, yeah.
Most don't necessarily do that. Most live here, and then it lives in the school improvement plans in different ways. But I think that we could have, we could have a district improvement plan that follows that same template. That's sort of the way we thought about this in development as well, too.
And do you think timeline-wise, it says twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six, have you thought about what twenty twenty-six looks like in like?
Sorry.
I'm running to the next.
Trying to get into, we don't, we don't even.
I'm on the other side. I'm kind of curious, like.
Oh, so yes, we have. So if you think.
It's the cycle, yeah.
Right, so the cycle would be FY twenty-three, we developed this one, right? And so then FY twenty-four would be year one, FY twenty-five would be year two, FY twenty-six would be year three. In the spring of FY twenty-six, you would see the new, so you'd really see two annual district improvement plans.
Right.
Right? In FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five, most likely, and then a new one developed in FY twenty-six.
Thank you.
Makes sense?
Yep, perfect.
There's gonna be a policy that outlines it all at some point.
I bet there will.
It'll be updated.
Good question.
Um, I'm trying to remember what it was. Oh, um, can you talk a little bit about like maybe an example of where some of the stakeholders or the SACs had feedback? Or like how something has evolved with Gloria and Cath, like just, cause I, these, the top four look familiar, right, from our webinar? So I just wanted to, for, for someone watching at home that feels like maybe this, who's not on SAC, right, and wants to know more about how this was created to this level?
Well, I would say a lot of the initiatives, the, the actual articulation of the initiatives, Gloria and Catherine and I worked on those. And we worked with the, I would bring it back to the leadership team and get feedback on the leadership team. We weren't asking the SACs to give us initiatives.
Okay.
So I, I would say some of the SACs were like, yeah, that sounds great, we really like this. They, they leaned into one more so than the other. Some of them were like, I don't even know how we would do four, four is not a school improvement plan.
Okay.
Right? And then another school would have like, oh, this is how we do this. So that showed me that, that we, it just shows that the, the SACs would look at them differently and know that, okay, once they are charged with that, then I think it's a little bit different to then, you, you can break it down, I think, in more manageable ways. When they were seeing it as it's so, it's such a big district thing that they didn't know how that would live in a, in a school improvement plan. I think there's been a lot of questions, similar to even what Ming Chen was saying around number three. I think a lot of people think that it's a great idea in theory, but there are people who are concerned about what does that mean in practicality? Which is why we specifically talk about being committed to maintaining our, 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 our high standards and expectations. When we were looking at simplifying the mission and vision.
Yeah.
I would say that was, we, we took some direct feedback from the DEI team and, and included things. I would even say, the, 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 the end of the, the, the first paragraph, we had talked about, well, one of the things that wasn't mentioned was joy. And we talk a lot about joy, so I know Catherine and Gloria were really, they sort of encouraged us to make sure that, that I think our, our, our priorities and the current leadership team's voice was reflected in the mission. So we, we added things like that, but then we added, based on the, the feedback from the DEI team, we talked about really layering out to embrace variability and honor diversity. And, and at the same time, the original second paragraph didn't specifically talk about active positive participation. And, but we did talk about local and global citizenship, and that's something that's, that has been a part of our, 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 our mission and vision for a while. And we've talked about creativity, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking for a little while now. But one of our students said, but we're not really asking people to be active participants. And so can we really spell out what does it mean to be a citizen? And then we had talked about it, we didn't want it to become too wordy. So then we said, well, let's actually just embed the idea that we want to prepare our students to be active positive participants.
And do you see those feeding into, I don't know what else to call it, the, a mission, vision, and then we kind of have that, that like header, or not header, footer at the bottom of some of our.
Yeah, so we've kind of talked about that, like we, that's something we, yeah, that is something we've talked about, like the whole, you know, shaping the future one childhood at a time.
Yeah, is that what it is? Okay.
And, and so I've been going back and forth, and we're talking about that, like as a leadership team, is that something that we just sort of? Do we continue using it? Do we slowly, do we slowly, do we adjust it? I mean, I, I feel like one of the things that I had said is I think it made a lot of sense at one time, and now I'm a little more concerned if it, if it comes across as we are shaping.
Oh geez.
Shaping children instead of, the purpose is really their future.
Right.
So I feel like we might think about turning it around, like we are, we're, you know, we're preparing, or we're, you know, helping them shape their future.
Right. I mean, it gets more, it gets more.
Yeah.
It, it gets to be more pressure when you're limited by number of words, right? Like.
It's seven words or something, right? Like it's hard, it's hard to say something in seven words.
That gets you. Oh, Mari has her hand up.
Oh, Mari, hi.
Hi, you could say something like preparing our students for the future, or, or preparing leaders for the future, thinking about leadership.
Yep.
Great, yep.
Can I jump back in, Val, just on what you were saying? I, I think one of the exercises that we did kind of earlier on actually was really tangible, was, really spoke to your question. And it was that DEI, um, uh, school DEI team meeting where we were in this room and we did a whole kind of carousel activity one of the days where, um, there was basically paper on the walls and each kind of spot had a, a theme to it based on, on, on these. And so in groups, we went around the room and kind of stopped and, and really kind of had discussions and added on to, um, you know, reviewed what was there and kind of added on. So that was an amazing, um, day to kind of really see kind of the tangible, and that was a mix of staff from elementary up to, um, you know, twelfth grade and students and.
Couple of parents.
You know, a couple of parents. So that, that was a, a really, um, interesting, um, you know, kind of.
That's true. That day we were specifically saying, what does this look like?
Exactly, yeah, based on the themes that we had kind of picked out. And so, um, you know, this, this is, I suppose, kind of a boiling down then what came out of, of that, um, exercise? I don't know what you wanna call it.
Yeah, yeah.
Conversation, but that was, that was, that was a good one.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
So, are you looking for feedback from the committee? If people have thoughts offline?
Sure.
Would you welcome those?
I would welcome them.
I mean, are you looking at this as a draft that you would then bring back?
Yeah, I was looking at this, I mean, like, other than the conversations that we've had just initially about potential, you know, word changes here and there. My hope is that at our next meeting, you would vote to approve it and/or want something changed in it, so that we can move forward with it.
So let's say committee members, two things this week, by end of the day Friday, if you have, I've already forgotten what the other, oh.
Have NASA.
NAB search, NAB principal search, if you have an interest, and then if you have, cause you're also gonna say.
Indigenous peoples.
Indigenous peoples.
Resolution, right, if you're interested in that, okay, three things. Or if you have any comments on the draft SDEP? Cause we wanna get those kind of one through or whatever.
And I think it's a good thing to note that the idea of the SDEP is really kind of a school committee thing as well. You know, we really should be looking at our goals as a school committee every year based off these as well.
Right.
And so, um, just bear that in mind.
And NASA can hold you accountable as well.
Exactly, yeah.
I think it's really exciting too, because we've talked about how to, how to like keep the super technicals sort of embedded in the agenda and on top of everyone's mind. And then these would hopefully become so well-versed that you'd be able to, you know, point to, oh, this supports strategic objective. that you'd be able to, you know, point to, oh, this supports strategic objective, you know, two. And everyone will go, yep.
The, the years that I was running SACs, we, every meeting was attached, there was, there, there, the specific goal in our school improvement plan was attached to the meeting, right, in some way, we were addressing something in some way. And I feel like that would be something that could also be.
Anything else for now? So everything we did tonight and the agenda, we're just gonna do again in a couple of weeks.
Literally just roll this.
It's a rerun.
Roll this one over, just put the words vote next to this, anticipated vote.
Do we have anticipated things at the next one that?
A budget update?
Budget update, yeah. Oh, and then, yeah, yeah, okay, great. All right, thank you. Anything else?
A motion to adjourn? Second.
We'll accept it. All in favor?
I, you got Mari there?
Oh, wait, roll call vote. Catherine?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Mari?
Yeah, Mules.
Doesn't count.
I have an eye, Sean.
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
That's it, folks, we adjourn. Thank you all.